We're going to start our meeting. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals. We have a big agenda tonight, so bear with us. First item on our agenda. This is a housekeeping item. I need a motion to approve a bill for $590.70 to the community advocate for the April 29, 2024 legal notices.
Motion to approve the community advocate legal notices?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Moving right on to our first public hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Michael Christopher, 377 Shrewsbury Street, Worcester, for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7, Table 2, to construct a deck 37 feet from the rear yard where 40 feet is required upon property located at 55 Washington Street in the Residence B1 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 23, Plot 182000. Might I ask the applicant to please step forward? You can take a seat.
Okay.
Are we doing?
Yeah, I think we'll take a seat and then for a public comment.
Okay, okay.
Got it. Do we have a microphone?
It's the little, I think there's the bar.
The little one?
Yeah, the bar.
Wonderful. Yep. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you guys so much for hearing our case. I'm Zach. I represent Remodeler Renew Home Improvement. I am here with both Judy and Peter Kaufman, the homeowners themselves. So as you just read, exactly what we're trying to do is we're trying to build a small deck on the back corner of their property of their home. It's eight feet out, 16 feet wide. We are at 35.3 feet away from the setback, and the setback is 40 feet, as you guys know. So we are encroaching the setback laws. Behind their home, there's nothing but woods for multiple acres. Every person on this street has either a deck or a farmer's porch on this house besides them. And the back of the terrain is very hilly. So they have no opportunity to put like a paver patio back there where they can actually enjoy the garden that they have without building a deck so they can actually overlook it and enjoy their property.
Thank you. Ms. O'Neil, anything to add?
Nope. The side yard meets the setback. It's just the rear yard.
No waivers?
We will take a look. I don't think they were requested, but there are a few that might need to be.
All right, we're going to go through the board. Attorney Byrne?
No, I have nothing. I've read all the materials and I have an opinion.
Okay, great. Kevin?
No, I think this is pretty straightforward. It's not very intrusive. It's relatively small. I think the few foot overlap is fine with me.
David?
I think you stated your case well. The, it sounds like the topography of the lot is a, is a limiting factor. So I see no problems with it. Thank you.
Tim?
Do you know who did this, this plot plan?
Yes, Jarvis Land Surveyor. They're out of Grafton.
Is that here somewhere? Because I don't, I don't.
I have a copy right here if you would like it.
Okay, because I see the, I see the 37 feet to the, or approximate to the deck, but is it here?
There is, yes. It's in the Google Drive.
Yes, I first uploaded, get a site plan for the plot plan, and they use, they use the GSI map that's on the town website. Once we knew that we were encroaching, we had to have our certified plot plan. So that's when we contacted Jarvis and we uploaded that.
So the 37 feet is from Kevin Jarvis?
It's 35.3.
35.
From the, is what it actually is with Jarvis Land.
To the proposed deck?
Yes, exactly. Yep.
Are there any, any photos of the backyard to show the topography of the back?
I do not have any myself. Do you have, have any of your garden at all or anything? No, I'm, I apologize. I don't have those to verify that.
All right. But there is a certified, but it's some, for some reason I can't see it, but it's there.
Yep, we have it. I have it.
I don't have anything further.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? All right, can I get a motion to close a public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the variance at 55 Washington Street in the Residence B1 District to Section 7, Table 2, to construct a deck 37 feet from the rear property line where 40 feet is required. Should probably amend that to be the 35.3 from the plot plan.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. You guys have a great night.
You too. All right, next up. This is here to appeal of Tom Pickett of 48 Harrington Ave., Shrewsbury, Mass. For a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 4B, to expand a pre-existing non-conforming structure upon property located at 5666 South Quincyman Avenue, Unit 58, in the MF1 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Assessor's Tax Plate 38, Plot 003000. Good evening.
Good evening, Board. Tom Pickett, Lakeway Realty, representing them tonight. It's a pretty small special permit we're asking for. The site plan indicates in the upper left-hand corner the location on the actual site. It borders Maronis Park, if no one knows, this particular area. There used to be a two-story building that was in front of this small number 58, South Quincyman Ave. After that was raised last year, it became pro, pretty obvious that both space and a better look would, would benefit the property. So currently in the upper right-hand corners what's existing there. On the second row down, you'll see, that's what you're actually seeing from South Quincyman Ave, you're seeing a roof line. So what we're proposing is number four, second down on the right, a small dormer. It's not increasing the footprint of the bedroom at all. It's just increasing the height. And we're talking about an area that's 20 by 20. And again, we're changing the front window to a more round Palladium-style window.
Ms. O'Neil, anything to add?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
No, I'd get.
No, I appreciate the work that's been done on that site. It looks fantastic every time I drive by it. And adding something like this has got to be better than seeing a roof line from street level.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
David?
No comment, looks good to me.
Tim?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Nor do I. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the special permit at 5556 South Quincyman Ave. In the multifamily one district to amend Section 4B to expand a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Adam Towner of 215 Old Mill Road for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7B, to construct an additional 13 and 8 tenths, to construct in addition 13.8 feet from the side yard where 20 feet is required on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling upon property located at 215 Old Mill Road in the Residence A zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 26, Plot 108000. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Adam Towner. I'm the owner and resident at 215 Old Mill. We have a pre-existing non-conforming addition probably built prior to 1975. It was poorly mated to the house and has different types of construction for the foundation. We're seeking a special permit to remove and replace that, to have better construction practices and less drafts and just a better addition to the house. We're looking to make it just about a foot closer to the, the plot line just to account for some more modern building practices.
Okay. Ms. O'Neil? Opening up to the board for comment. Kevin?
I've read all of the materials. It appears de minimis to me. And, and this is, this is, was used or is being, will be used as just a bathroom and laundry?
Yeah, that, that's what it is now. It's, it's a small bathroom about this wide, maybe this wide, and a laundry room. We're just going to remove it, make it into one full bath and laundry.
Got it.
Great. Kevin?
I assume the expansion is to account for either ADA or code clearances maybe updated. What am I looking for? Insulating factors?
Yeah, exactly.
Thicker walls?
Just, it's, it was probably a, an entrance porch they enclosed prior to the building code.
Okay.
So it's, you know, it's constructed in that era. So if we construct it now, it'll just be a little bit bigger.
Okay. Yeah, I'm all for it. Tight lot, not much you can do about it anyway. So to go bigger is going to be an issue anyway. So I have no issues.
Dave?
Yeah, one foot to essentially replace with the same on a pre-existing non-conforming. I see no reason to deny it. That's okay by me.
Thank you.
Tim?
Yeah, to me, minor change. I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Yep, minor change. All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter? All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion, please?
Motion for the special permit for 215 Old Mill Road, Resident A District, to Section 7B, to construct an addition 13 and 8 tenths feet from the side yard where 40 feet is required.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm in charge of seconds.
Your first, your second. All right. Next hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Steve Lange of 280 Pompa Gussett Road, Rutland, Mass. For a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, Table 1, to construct an addition for an in-law apartment upon property located at 5 Old Salem Circle in the Residence A zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 10, Plot 334000. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, I'm Steve Lange. I'm here asking for a special permit. I have the homeowner Meredith and her mother, who's going to move into the addition. We're putting it at 5 Old Salem Circle. It's going to be, we designed it on the back of the house, so it's not too much is seen from the, from the front. We had a plot plan made, so we meet all the, all the zoning requirements for, you know, to add the addition. So we're just looking to do a one, one-bedroom.
Okay. Ms. O'Neil?
Yep, that sums it up. It's a conforming addition. So the only conditions that'll go with this, like any other in-law apartment, will be that it, you know, shall be occupied by family and that the rights to this special permit, you know, will sunset, you know, if this house ever sells with you.
Okay. Kevin?
Just prior to the meeting, I heard you talking with the nice lady in the middle about where the window was going to be, okay? And that's very important, where the window is going to be. I've read all your materials and I'm satisfied.
Great. Kevin?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add either. Keeps with the, one of the corners that's already non-conforming, just a little bit tighter, but relatively the same, same height as the garage. So very much not intrusive. So I have nothing for to add.
Great. David?
I see no obvious noise, odor, or other, other issues arising from a special permit for this. And you're not seeking a variance. So I don't see why you shouldn't have it.
Great. Tim?
I don't have any questions.
All right, great. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? All right. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the special permit at 5 Old Salem Circle in the Residence A District to Section 6, Table 1, to construct in addition for an in-law apartment. Do we need to add any conditions?
Yeah, so there, the in-law apartment shall only be occupied by individuals who are related to the principal residence and that the rights authorized by the issuance of the special permit shall be limited to the owner and shall remain in effect only during their ownership and occupancy.
As Louise stated, added.
Very good. All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Peter DeGoya of 40 Superior Road, Worcester, Mass. For a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 4B, to construct in addition 11, 11.4 feet from the sideline property where 20 feet is required upon property located at 73 Topsfield Circle in the Residence A zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 40, Plot 103000. Thank you. If you could state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Peter DeJoy. I'm the applicant and contractor manager for the project at 73 Topsfield Circle. I'm here with Janice DeJoy, my partner, and the homeowner Alexis Bradley. And we are proposing and seeking approval for a special permit to add, in addition on the back of the house, an extension which would be to relocate an existing bedroom. And the structure is already pre-existing and non-conforming, and we would be extending the non-conformity towards the rear right setback approximately three feet and eight inches.
Thank you. Louise?
Yep, that sums it up. It's just a small non-conformity, you know, increase on that side yard.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
I've read all the materials in detail, and this again seems de minimis in terms of our procedures. And I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Great. Kevin?
Yeah, I don't think there's really much you could do on this site besides what you've done. It looks like there's a septic field here with some intrusion. If you were to go even more linear off the back here, based on the layout on the inside of the house, I think it makes sense to do what you've done with the 11 feet, four inches close, but I think that's far enough away.
Thank you. David?
I agree. I think it's de minimis. And I agree with what Kevin also said.
Great. Kevin, or Tim?
I would agree. Minor increase in the non-conformity. I don't have any other questions.
Great. Public hearing? Anybody wishes to be heard on the matter? All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the special permit at 73 Topsfield Circle in the Residence A District to Section 4B, to construct in addition 11 and 4 tenths feet from the side property where 20 feet is required.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right. Next hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Michelle Kraus of 24 Floral Street for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, Table 1, to allow for the keeping of other-than-customery household pets on a parcel less than five acres upon property located at 20.
Yes.
I am so sorry. I skipped a hearing. Are you the ones that I skipped? No, okay.
54 Crescent.
Can we take it out of order?
Oh.
We're going to take it out of order? Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. We're so excited to get to the animals that we skipped right over you. I apologize. Okay, picking it back up. This is on a parcel less than five acres upon property located 20 floor, 24 Floral Street in the Residence A zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Assessor's Tax Plate 29, Plot 068000. Just wanted to see if you were all on your feet. You are. So thank you. If you could state your name for the record, please.
Michelle Kraus.
David Kraus.
Good evening.
So.
I guess I'll jump into it a little bit first. You know, I've lived at that property for 18 years. And I've kind of started a passion project in years past with, you know, my love of animals. I'm a science teacher in Worcester, been so for nearly 10 years. My wife's a nurse at She's Very High, so we've always been an active part of the community. And I had the opportunity. We have some dwarf goats. The dwarf goats really become the size of a, you know, medium to large-sized dog at most. And then we have two Juliana pigs, which again, get to about 80 pounds, you know, full grown. And again, being able to kind of get into farming and doing this stuff has been an absolute passion and joy of mine. It's helped me out immensely with myself and growth and especially cleaning up the property with the goats. And we've used it as a means to enter into the community. We give eggs away. You know, we want people to be a part of it. And, you know, if you can sense some nervous, it's because it's a pet, not livestock to us. You know, these aren't something we butcher.
We're not using them for the purpose of food or breeding or any financial gain. They are our pets.
It's Lucy Clementine, you know, Bebop. You know, these are our friends. And so again, it's been a lot of learning, you know, through the process. And we continue to learn and we continue to dive into knowledge when we get it. But it's definitely something that, you know, is a passion, and we have two feet in.
They are kind. They are friendly. We have a 21-month-old son who goes in the pen and plays tag with the goats. Our friends come over with their children. It's just been such a wonderful thing, experience to have on our property.
And all started with hatching an egg, you know, in a, in a classroom. And then, don't do that, you know.
One thing led to another, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Louise?
Nope, no. I mean, we have all of the information we need, I think. There's a couple of letters of support in here. And we were made aware of a police report. Pigs, we did see that they got out.
And I wrote a letter in response to that. We have secured the pig enclosure with cattle panels now and rocks so that what had happened was with springtime mud and erosion, they had pushed the fence. So now it's a fence that they cannot bend or push to burrow underneath. And then it's surrounded with like two feet of paving stone on both sides, so there's no digging.
And electrical wire on top of that. So it was an expensive weekend.
This was done after the incident?
We had wire before.
It was in response. There was a fence there. And this is a learning process. So we learned and we definitely made it more secure and prevented, preventing them from getting out again. And I mean, there was, it caused a disruption, but it didn't cause any harm to anybody. And fortunately, everything was okay. The people who had helped us were super kind. The police officer was super kind. Animal control officer. Everybody has been very supportive and kind. And our, we have three, we don't have any other-than-little beginnings next to us, any direct residential neighbors on any side of our property. But the three most direct neighbors across the street from us have all written letters of support for this.
Okay. Kevin, do you have questions?
What, I noticed that one of the things you, there was a plan that was submitted at one stage and showed size for pigs, size for goats or something. What is the overall size of this lot? And by the way, you're tenants there?
My mother owns the property. My mother owns the property. I've been there eighteen years, you know, living there through college and career.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, generally not a blip on the radar with anything there, you know, until, um.
Until this past week.
Yeah. And I was unbeknownst to the rules with the goats. I take that fully on me. You know, it was something I didn't oversight, so.
We had read through the bylaws and the zoning laws and, um, when I read through the town bylaws, I didn't see anything legal about having goats or pigs. Um, if I did misread the less than five acres or greater than five acres in the, um, residential A zone. Um, and we're here to make sure that we're doing everything properly from here on out and that we're by the book.
I even went with, uh, the state and I registered, you know, my birds. The, some of the guys, you know, come by. So I've done my steps to try to, you know, whatever I need to do to toe the line, you know, by all means, I've been trying to do.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, questions?
No, I don't. Uh, Louise, I assume if there were more police reports, they would have shown up in here.
Correct.
And unfortunate it happens a week before the hearing, but such is life. Um, no, I think this is great. Letters of support are always great for the board. Love seeing that. Um, and the fact that you don't really have neighbors, quote unquote, um, is also a plus as well, because if it were to ever happen again, then, um, there's really not much disturbance happening. So I have no issues here.
Okay, David?
Uh, when the, when the pigs escaped, uh, how did you guys know?
Well, we had known right away and we were looking for them. We actually, when, um, the officer had come to the house, I was in the backwoods searching for them and he had come into the backyard and I heard him calling for me. Um, so we had already been out looking for them. No, because, um, it was within a half hour. Because he gets up at five to feed everybody, so.
Even before five some days. So they were out early, you know, and we tried to get ahead of it. Uh, I took the day off of school, sick day.
Yeah. Yeah, we both took the day off to make sure everything was okay.
We have blink cameras around the property as well. So at times at home, I can see motion. You know, that's some of the things I do with the kids at school to show, you know, the goats running around and stuff. So we have the ability to see them moving and if something was, you know, to cause an disturbance or get out.
And then, um, you had mentioned in your application about handling the, the waste. Could you just go over that real quick?
Oh, sure. Um, so we have a composting bin for our garden. Um, so any of the waste we compost and then turn into fertilizer for our vegetable garden.
We're nuts with that too. We have a garden about three to four times, you know, this size in here that we keep adding to. So, um, you know, a lot of that, we just regenerate into, you know, composting and, you know, try to do as much as we can to recycle, reuse.
Okay. Yeah, that, uh, what I was getting at was just making sure there was no, that you guys were, you seemed attentive to them, you know. So with the escape, that you were right on it and that there's no other, uh, you know, impacted noise or odor in the neighborhood. And with the letters of support, that's the only reason to, to deny.
The neighbors directly across the street didn't even know initially. So I think that is a testament to, uh, uh, noise level and smells or anything like that.
Tim?
So your property is the first house on the right coming onto Floral off of South Street?
Correct.
Yep, twenty-four. So we have the water to the right of us and probably nearly a quarter mile of woods.
DPW on the other side.
If you're facing the house and you back up to the DPW.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay. Just a procedural question for the chair.
Mm-hmm.
Since they're, since they don't own the property, is this something that the property owner should be the applicant for? Or can they by right make an application for this?
We've had this before. I think because it's their pets, I think that it needs to be attached to the property's address with their names attached to the appeal.
I would agree.
As a condition?
Um, I don't know that we need to condition it since they live in the property.
We can condition it that this special permit is only authorized if.
To, to the applicants.
Right.
To them as tenants.
Correct, not to the property. So if they ever move, this special permit goes away.
You're right, not to any subsequent owner.
Yeah.
And that is one of the proposed conditions.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
I, 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 I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I asked a question and then I asked another question. How big is this lot where, where you have and?
Zero point six-two acres.
I'm sorry?
The lot is zero point six-two acres.
So it's a quarter of an acre?
No, no, it's over a half.
No, it's more than half an acre.
Yeah.
Six point two, yeah.
It's almost three quarters of an acre.
So it's a half an acre. Okay. So, and then there's certain areas for the goats, certain areas for the rest of it. This is, I, I, I know exactly where you are on Floral Street and I know, I'm old enough to remember all the development of Bumblebee.
My uncle used to live across the street.
All of those places. And it was the folks on Bumblebee who saw a couple of pigs and called the police, okay? There are a lot of neighbors around there. How far beyond your immediate neighbors did you go to inquire about how they feel about this?
Generally speaking, we went up and down the street. I was able to kind of see where they went in footprints. It was muddy, so a little bit of tracking. Um, and behind our yard, there's a long path that goes the length of Floral Street. So usually, I used to walk the pigs. I had them on leashes and I would take them back there and they had, I did walks with them. So I think part of it was, you know, that's where they felt comfortable, like where the dogs walk back there as well. And when they get to the end, that would put you out.
That, on Fruit Street.
And they just ran from there. So.
We, we, we have a thoroughly and, um, seriously enforced dog leash law. There's no requirement that these dogs, if they're off the property, could, uh, restrained in any way, right?
Well, they have collars on them.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah. When the, when the police officer came, I put an Oreo out and then I picked them up. You know, that was the extent of the, the tackle.
Okay.
I'm going to reserve my comments and questions until we hear if there's any comments from the audience.
Just one more question?
Sure.
Is there any concern? I don't know the topography of your lot or the way that, you know, where the runoff goes. Is there any concern for the adjacent wetland that ties into the, the larger one across South Street? Or any runoff or anything like that from the?
No.
Animals?
It's a conservation commission purview. Good question, but I don't, we don't have the answers to that.
Okay.
As far as waste runoff?
Yeah.
There's, so where the animals are, there's no waste running down into the water area. It's all cleaned up efficiently.
Yeah, I don't, I don't doubt.
Yeah.
I'm just, just wondering with, 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 where the lot, if it, if it slopes toward the wetland and this might, might, it's a moot point, really.
No, it makes sense to ask that question. I don't know that we have an answer, but. All right. Um, let's move on to the next part of our hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to be heard? Could you step forward? We have a podium right here, please.
Hello, my name is Melissa Cole. I own and operate Little Beginnings, which shares.
You gotta speak a little louder.
My name's Melissa Cole and I own and operate Little Beginnings, which shares a property line with the Krauses. I want to be upfront. I have a personal relationship with the Krauses, so I want to be upfront about that. And I'd like to speak first about how the animals have been a benefit to us. So first off, the children have really enjoyed watching them through the fence. The other day, a chicken laid eggs. The kids were, it was like the talk of the school for several days. They loved it. Also, the Krauses very generously allowed us to use their goats to eat our poison ivy in our playground, which was very, very kind, thoughtful, and they did that at no charge. So we super, super want to be good neighbors. I agree with the Krauses that this has been a passion project. Again, I know them socially and listening to them talk about it, I know how much this means to them. We are not looking to have the animals removed in any way. I would like to be a little bit more forthright. We've had several instances of the animals over in our playground and in our parking area. Um, we've had chickens probably about a dozen times that I have to go get them out of the playground so we can have recess. And we've had the turkey a handful of times. At one point, they charged one of the teachers and we, she couldn't get to her car. So we've had to call animal control several times, um, to try to help us manage it. We had the pig probably about two weeks ago. So while we're working with them and they're genuinely, I think, trying their best, it, there have been several instances of the animals over on our side. So what we're asking for is not for the animals to be removed, but if there is any zoning regulation in terms of the pen quality or how they're constructed, if there's any, um, like, um, monitoring that could be done or is done, if there's anything at all to just give a little bit more oversight to this property. I understand they're learning as they go, but a lot of that is kind of falling on us to try to manage and I'd like to have that kind of stop. So the more oversight we could have, the better. Again, we're not looking to have them removed, but we would prefer to have a little bit more town support in keeping them off our property. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir?
My name is Ed Monce. I live at Ten Grove Meadow Lane. I own Thirty Floral Street, the building that houses Little Beginnings. Um, I'm very familiar with this couple. Uh, David's mom is my significant other the last seventeen years and she owns that house. And I own the daycare center building. Um, I have no issue with the animals' benefits. I, I will give you that, uh, when the pigs are on the run, which is not often, but a couple of times, it can be a, a, a challenge to, to get them in. All I'm looking to do, uh, with my comments is to assure the board that I'll be working with David and his mom. And Melissa happens to be my daughter. Uh, so it's all in the family, yes.
Lot thickens.
Hell, yes. Uh, uh, be working to, um, um, do whatever kind of fencing is necessary. I know, um, the Krauses have electrified a fence or something and that seems to have, um, quieted down the, the escapees quite a bit. Uh, so I continue and pledge in the future that I'll be, uh, I have the resources to do whatever's necessary to fence and contain these animals and let everybody live happily ever after.
Nice. Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I just, I wa, I would like to make a comment. I don't know if anyone else cares to make a comment before we proceed forward. I know, um, I did, um, I was curious about the location of your house. I could not, in my mind, recall exactly where it was. So I, I did take a drive-by and you have, um, like, a Dr. Seuss world going on back there, right?
Goes into the wood line, yeah.
Yep, there's a whole lot of stuff going on. There was a turkey, I think, sitting on top and, um, anyway. I could imagine where animals and children go hand in hand and knowing that Little Beginnings was next door was both an interesting and a concern of mine. So they, just like we heard, it's, it's, um, and if I had a child or grandchild that was a participant at Little Beginnings, I would love the fact that they're seeing it, but I'd be afraid of, you know, an animal escaping. So I really appreciate that there has been, um, some discussion about how we can fence that in and make sure this doesn't happen again. And the timing on this whole thing is very interesting in that, you know, you've been doing this for a long time and you're coming in front of us for the special permit and we have an escapee. So I think that is why, um, we have some, some conditions that I think are appropriate to apply to this. Um, but I would be remiss if I didn't say that we have to just keep those kids safe, right? Um, that's the most important thing. But we also applaud you for what you're doing and, um, it's really cool. I didn't realize pigs lived there, so that's really neat. Um, so that, those are my concerns. Um, Kevin, I'm going to start and go this way. Do you have any?
May I?
Yes, please.
So, and just to be clear, um, I appreciate everyone's comments, but we are only here for the goats and the pigs, not the chickens or the turkeys for this special permit. Yes.
Hopefully they get along with goats and the, the goats and.
We have less than twenty-four poultry.
Which is the law.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further comments, Kevin?
This is a, I, I, I know exactly where you are and I know that that house was there before everything developed all around you. But that's a big residential area now with lots of grownups, lots of kids, lots of traffic, lots of everything, okay? Um, I, I still have some, you know, reservations because I don't, I don't know what the regulations are relating to, you know, the town or the, or the animal control officer or any of that sort of stuff. Uh, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't know anything about, and so you understand, I don't know anything about pigs and goats either, okay? Um, and I, I have some reservations that this maybe needs to be studied just a little more carefully. Um, with, with some, with the nice lady who said, you know, she loves you, your kids love you. But there's got to be really control over, uh, pigs and, and goats. I have some reservations about this.
Louise, I'm, uh, I think it's appropriate for Louise to jump in because I know that we had discussions about the animal control aspect of this. Is there anything you can add to talk?
Well, and I did have a question. Are they, um, because I think animal control goes out for inspections when they're, okay, so.
We've been inspected.
Registered for the state? Yes. Great. So that's.
Checked cages multiple times. He's come by. He's been with us when we brought back, you know.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful. So there is some oversight already with our animal control. Has already inspected. Right, they're on site. They look at the properties, but it's good. And that can be, you know, just a condition, you know, that you can talk about if, just, you know, to make sure, you know, again, reinforce that the enclosures will be closed and locked at all times. Um, and in the past with other, you know, animals on the property that are, you know, your customary pets, um, the board has asked, um, the applicant to come back, um, you know, after a year or two years to renew the special permit, just to, you know, check in and see how things are going and make sure, um, that's amenable to everyone. That could be something that you can talk about as well.
I, I'm going to jump in myself on one thing. Um, we have a number of conditions that we're discussing. And one of the conditions possibly was to go back, um, after a period of a year to, um, make sure that we're going to renew the special permit. I personally think a year's too long and I would like to see it be six months, not to create more work for anyone, but I just think, given the proximity to Little Beginnings, um, I'd like to see it be six months. And then from there, if there's no problems, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't extend it beyond that to a year. But that would be something that I would personally recommend.
I don't have any qualms on either six months or a year.
I think a, uh, coming back after a period of time is, is definitely critical. I'm okay with a year. Uh, six months might, I could be a little on the early side, but I could go either way.
The difficulty really is, is, you know, nuisance by odor is certainly a possibility for the, especially with the proximity of the school. And if the pigs get loose and there's a car accident on Floral Street or something like that, that's concerning. Um, so I'm having a difficult time, uh, without some assurances that, you know, that can't happen. Um, and especially with the kids next door. It's really a, kids don't know any better, right? But it's, it could be a health issue for them as well. Um, so without some assurances that they'll, they'll be contained and contained, you know, a hundred percent, I'm having, I'm struggling with, uh, being in favor of this.
Right. Um. You might, yep.
We close the public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. We close the public comment. I'm sorry, I'm off tonight, as usual. Um, we cannot accept public comment, sorry, because we closed that portion of the meeting. So, thank you, but, um. All right, so, um, this is a tough one. Um, we could seek a continuation, which is going to continue this another month, which isn't going to solve any problems. Um, we can heavily condition it, um, and hope that all the conditions, hope that all the conditions continue to be met. We can deny it outright. And, um, I'm going to look to my left and to my right and let's talk about how we want to handle this.
Um, it, it, one, it is, it is a special permit, okay? It's a permitted use with.
Correct.
Things put in it. Um, I, I, I can remember participating as part, as sitting out there with clients of things being done and with review after a period of time, okay? Um, and I think that's essential to this, you know, with the appropriate, you know, heavy, heavy conditions being imposed upon this because of that whole development in that neighborhood over a substantial number of years and children and traffic and all of that sort of stuff. So, but, and I would go with the six-month rule. Get a look and see how it's working out for six months and then come back and if it requires more time, we can do more time with conditions.
Louise?
And one of the, uh, conditions that, um, I kind of found from the past decisions, um, it initially said noise complaints, but if you wanted to be any complaints, um, you know, associated with this use, you know, shall be, you know, filed with the building inspector's office and brought to your attention.
Good idea.
That's the, um, draft condition number four.
Uh, okay. You got conditions.
I do, well.
Okay.
I mean, they're suggestions. We can condition it with anything.
I hear.
Well, our job is not to have consensus. It's to state opinions and decide how we want to proceed forward.
I'm wondering how many more conditions we could add, given the requirements by the state and already being inspected by the state.
Right.
I think what we have here works and if we want to change up any of the verbiage, I think we're good with that. But I think we're overconditioning if we start adding in items about inspections and requirements by law because they're already.
It's, it's beyond our purview. I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Just, um, yeah. I think we're, we can only condition it with the available tools that we have in front of us and hope that police, um, animal control, state licenser boards will do what they need to do, um, because it is a special permit.
I'm fine moving on if we want to amend number two to say six months instead of one year.
To me, the six months just makes me feel like we're being proactive, you're on alert and, and we're appeasing and understanding the concerns of the daycare next door. Um, that, that's what I would like to see.
You all set?
I'm good. Yes.
I, I, uh, I agree with the six months. I think that's an appropriate timeframe. Um, these, these four draft conditions as they are, like you just said, with about number two and then number four, if that was noise, odor, et cetera, any complaints, uh, can be filed, uh, with the building inspector. So that way in the six months' time, we know what kind of activity we, uh, have seen out there. Um, I think that the concerns of other members of the board about the, the, the road traffic and the proximity and the, the more densely populated area as opposed to a purely rural area, not traditionally. The reason why we're here is because you're seeking a special permit because goats and pigs are not traditionally kept pets. Um, but we also live in the twenty-first century and it's harder and harder to find actual rural area where kids can, you know, experience and enjoy things like, like goats and pigs. Um, so I agree with the chair's delicacy about ensuring that we have the safety for the kids and everybody else in the neighborhood, as well as allowing you your special permit so you can contribute to the community uh, in the way that you want to. Um, so I'm all for the six months and for, um, you know, collecting any complaints and then revisiting it.
Thank you. Well stated. Tim?
I would agree. I, I could be in favor of it with these conditions in a six months' period of time. It's more or less a probation. You know, and review it in six months and.
Right.
See if things are under control and.
Right.
Nothing happened.
Right. I mean, I think if we see you back here in less than six months or we hear about it, which is part of the conditions, we would have a really bigger concern. So, but we can tell that you're passionate about this and I really am hopeful that this will work out. Um, so we do have four draft conditions that I'd like to incorporate, um, into our decision, should the board decide to move forward. Um, so, um, might I get a motion, please?
Um, motion to approve the special permit with conditions uh, for Twenty-Four Floral Street in the resident A district to section six, table one, to allow for the keeping of other than customary household pets on a parcel less than five acres. Those conditions, amending on the fly. Um, the enclo, number one, the enclosures shall remain closed and locked at all times when not attended to by the owner. This special permit shall be valid for a period of six months, whereupon the applicant shall submit to the Board of Appeals an application for renewal, renewal of said permit. The rights authorized by the issuance of this special permit shall be limited to Michelle Kraus and shall remain in effect only during her ownership and occupancy of the premises. And lastly, noise, odor, and nuisance complaints associated with this use shall be filed with the building inspector and brought to the attention of the Board of Appeals for the life of the special permit.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. It carries.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And the most patient award tonight goes to the gentleman who I. And the most patient award tonight goes to the gentleman who I skipped right over. You are very sorry, aren't you, that you were so patient?
It was an interesting drama.
Well, there we go. Thank you. Let me, uh, read your appeal.
If you need eggs, they're available.
That's a good trade, actually. All right, so, um, next 6:30 hearing is to hear the appeal of Neil Harvey, uh, 697 Hartford Turnpike, Shrewsbury, Mass., for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, section six, table one, to construct an addition for an in-law apartment upon property located at 54 Crescent Street in the residence B1 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 27, plot 1, 47001. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I'm here with Derek Carrada, who's the owner of the property, and, um, he's courageously looking to have his in-laws, uh, move in with him so they can spend time with his children and whatnot. And, uh, we've submitted plans, um, showing the setbacks as well as the elevations and, um, the layout of the property. Um, it's all well within the setback requirements. Um, and so we're seeking to get a special permit for the in-law apartment.
Thank you. Louise?
Um, I don't think I have any comments. No.
Okay. Kevin?
Do you want to make note of the four-member board?
Yes, uh, we do have a four-member board. We had a member that needed to recuse themselves, so it's a four-member board. Um, should we vote against you, it would mean that we'd have, you, you're at a, you're down one board member, but you understood that ahead of this meeting?
Consent to that.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Kevin?
This is the second one we've had tonight, and both of them for in-law apartments that are 994 feet. Is there something magical about 994 feet?
Indeed. It's the stretch code for energy. If you exceed 1,000 square feet, then it requires you to do some, the, an upgrade of the entire
Ah.
Wow.
I, I wondered about that.
Good question.
Okay.
Perceptive.
I've looked at all the material, and I, I have no concerns about it.
Interesting. Kevin?
I don't have any concerns with this either.
Yep, uh, I agree. No concerns.
Right. I would just state that clearly we have, um, a lot of families that wanna be together, and in-laws seem to be the new thing, so welcome aboard the in-law train. Um, okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the special permit at 54 Crescent Street in the residence B1 district, uh, to section six, table one, to construct an addition for an in-law apartment.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again for your patience. We really appreciate that. All right. Speaking of patient people, our final hearing, uh, this is a continuation from March 25, 2024. This is for 3369 Green Street, a 40B project with Pulte Homes of New England.
I'm sorry.
Um, LLC 1900 West Park Drive, Suite 180, Westboro, Mass. This is for a comprehensive permit to permit the construction of a 300-unit multifamily residential development. Um, we do have some procedural changes. What's up?
Do you need me?
We can't.
Does he need to sign anything? Is, are all the vote sheets are good?
Uh, the vote sheets are not good.
Okay.
Thank you. If you would not mind, excuse me for one minute, we have housekeeping. If you could sign all of these, that would be great.
Oh, I, I, I will, yeah.
You'll wait. Okay.
Okay. All right.
I'm willing to stay and, you know, stay and listen to Green Street.
You're welcome to stay and listen to Green Street. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm just waiting to get let in so I can present.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, goodness. All right, that looks like us. All right, perfect. Thank you very much, and thank you for, uh, having us here again tonight. Um, so just quickly, I just wanna start off with a bit of a recap on, uh, the process to date. Uh, we submitted in November of '23. We had our first, uh, public hearing in December of '23. It was kind of a project overview. Uh, in January of this year, we presented stormwater and site design. February, uh, we presented, uh, traffic impacts. In March, we presented detail on water and sewer design, and tonight we are going to discuss, uh, architecture. And so in addition to these meetings, um, which most of you have attended, as well as some, uh, of the, um, residents, um, we have been working with the town and the peer review engineers to, uh, refine, uh, the project. Um, and just to touch upon the status of that peer review process, uh, we have coordinated with Graves Engineering on the site planning and stormwater design peer review, and we closed that out last week. Uh, we have coordinated with Bowman Consulting Group to respond to and satisfy all of their comments on the traffic analysis. And we've coordinated with Weston and Sampson to satisfy the water and sewer design peer review, uh, and believe we have completed, uh, that, and we're just waiting on, uh, confirmation from our most recent edits that we just sent over to them. So just, uh, to touch upon architecture, uh, really the first step, uh, that we take in identifying the appropriate architecture for a site is understanding and analyzing site characteristics. Uh, so I wanted to start with this here. This is the existing conditions site plan. Um, really, as the site features on this parcel or this, uh, area in particular were integral to, um, the design and layout of our buildings. So this is the existing condition survey. Um, north is pointing to, uh, the left, and South Street, uh, is running on the top of the screen. Route 20 is on the left of the screen. Green Street, uh, is at the bottom of the screen. Uh, you can see there are, um, two, uh, general slope areas on either side of the property that kind of slope down towards the middle of the property. Uh, and there's, um, some wetland areas that kind of bisect the site, both north to south as well as east to west. Um, really, one of our primary goals as we started to look at this was to, uh, minimize or ideally avoid, uh, potential wetland impacts, um, as well as a second design goal to really minimize site work and disturbance. So that really focused us on those two, uh, areas on either side of the, the parcel there. And both of these areas are directly accessible from Green Street. And really, these, uh, form the development envelope for Emerald Run. So we're just gonna walk through a few slides that, uh, detail the building architecture that has been selected for Emerald Run. The buildings in Emerald Run are made up of primarily one- and two-bedroom units with, um, eight total three-bedroom units mixed in, uh, as required, uh, by the Commonwealth as part of the Chapter 40B program. And I just wanna stress, uh, that there is no difference between an affordable unit and a market rate unit. Uh, the affordable units are blended into the building. They're built with the same materials, and they have the same unit layout. Um, there really would be no way to determine which unit is affordable, which unit is market rate. And the distribution and location of these units, um, are, are proposed by, uh, us as the developer, but ultimately, they're approved by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities before it's finalized. Uh, this building design in particular was chosen after significant coordination with the town of Shrewsbury, uh, as this design and style specifically, um, allows for a full building electrification. So that means electric heat pumps and electric hot water heaters. So, uh, no propane, no natural gas, no oil on site, so no building emissions, uh, no fossil fuel dependency. The building is designed to accommodate the mechanical equipment, uh, necessary for full building electrification. The building facade is made up of contrasting but complementary, uh, exterior features uh, that provide a linear symmetry, but they really, um, without opposing a kind of some, single monolithic form. Uh, as mentioned, when we were going through the site characteristics, uh, it was really important to minimize site work, uh, and build into the topography, uh, as opposed to going in and flattening out the site and creating just a clean building pad. Um, so in an effort to accommodate the significant grade changes on this site, uh, the first floor elevation is set so that each sequential building, uh, is stepped up following the natural progression of the landscape. Uh, and that works out well as far as the inclusion of the underground garages, as that allows us to, um, really design into the side of the wall, um, in the manner with that existing topography. The underground garage entrance is facing the downslope side of each building, which allows for the ground to slope upwards along the building, follow that nat, following the natural course of the existing topography. Uh, additionally, the underground garages, uh, allow us to minimize the amount of surface parking unnecessary for those future residents, which means much less site disturbance, much less impervious surface, uh, and really preserves more of that existing landscape. Um, we have had a lot of success with similar styles in the area. Uh, these buildings have been well received by, uh, neighbors as well as the eventual homeowners. Some of the highlights of the design include, uh, defined front entrance. Uh, there are actually two entrances. One of them is more prominent than the other. The, uh, entrance that is attached to the elevator, um, corridor, as well as, uh, the mailroom is, uh, more prominently, um, evident. Uh, use of stone and composite accents to add variety to the exterior materials. Uh, and recessed balconies and box bays, they add projections to improve the shading and aesthetics. And collectively, these provide a more attractive exterior, um, really serving to break up the facade, but they also contribute individually as each unit, uh, benefits from these features as well. As I mentioned, we have years of experience developing similar, uh, communities and buildings throughout the region, and we continuously update and, uh, modernize our architecture based on innovations in building materials and styles, technological advancements, and really, most importantly, homeowner feedback. We conduct, uh, frequent surveys to, um, you know, past homeowners or, or in, in past, um, um, communities to understand what, you know, what could be done differently. From low e-glass windows to advanced insulation, we're constantly integrating new building products and practices to help increase the energy efficiency of our homes. Uh, and really, their home plans, our home plans have been optimized for material content and ease of construction, allowing for, um, more efficient use of building resources and minimizing job site waste. We install energy-efficient smart appliances to ensure energy efficiency, and we install low-flow fixtures in the bathrooms and the kitchens to ensure water conservation. The diversity and style and type, uh, these homes allows for a diverse group of, uh, homeowners to call this home. Uh, the footprints in particular, they're designed for one-floor living. Uh, as the elevators, they, um, you know, you can get the access from the garage level all the way up to each of the individual floors. Uh, and again, just wanna stress one last time, these are homeownerships, not rentals. So, uh, these are homes that are people are proud of. Uh, these are people that'll have a positive effect on the neighborhood, and they'll have a positive, uh, economic impact on the community. And just to touch on, uh, kind of what we see as the next steps, we have one meeting that is currently scheduled in the books, uh, for May 23rd, as we discussed at our last meeting, uh, and that will really be to discuss, uh, waivers and, uh, peer, peer review closeout and any other, um, items that may come up. And with that, uh, I will open up to any additional questions.
Okay. Questions now? You wanna listen to the audience, and then questions?
I have a couple.
Okay. You wanna start down there?
Yeah, the, the, on the elevation, what is above the fourth floor? Is that more living space, or is that, is that decorative aesthetic? Are they windows? What is that?
Those are, it's just a facade. It's a, it's a, um, it's a Tyvek.
It's a parapet wall.
Yeah, parapet wall, thank you.
Okay.
So we're putting the electric heat pumps on the
Mechanicals?
Yes.
And so the, uh, it, it blocks the view of those.
The roof is actually lower than that.
Correct. That, those are, again, they're a parapet wall that helps, um, you know, disguise some of the mechanicals.
And the aesthetics. It improves the aesthetics of the building.
And all of these buildings, you, you mentioned, um, they're, they're similar to developments already done? Are there any in Shrewsbury that these are similar to, for reference?
Uh, not that we have done in Shrewsbury. Uh, there is a similar one in Grafton, though, not very close to the Shrewsbury line, uh, right off of, uh, Institute Road, uh, Institute Road and Westboro Road.
Okay.
Um, it's actually, it's a perfect time to go check it out there. We have two similar buildings proposed. One is, the exterior is actually pretty close to being complete, and they're working on it exterior now. And then the other building over there is, um, the foundation was just poured last week. So that would be a good, um, one to go look at.
So same exterior elevation, more or less?
Pretty, pretty close, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't wanna say it's gonna be exactly the same, but it's, it's very similar.
Yeah. Are any of these, um, based on the topography of this, of this property, are any of these garage unders gonna be visible? Anything, will, will there any peers be seen, and you'll see cars parked under these?
No, no, the garages themselves will all be, um, under. So the, the, the topography will be designed so that you'll, the entryway, uh, obviously we drive in, but the slope will then carry up, uh, along the foundation.
Just curious. I've seen that with
Yeah.
buildings like this. Okay.
They're, they're enclosed, so the, the garage doesn't have, like, an open windows or screens where you see into the garage. They're completely enclosed.
Okay. And are, are these buildings subject to the residential stretch code here in Shrewsbury?
They're, they're subject to the current code, building code, yes.
Which is ever-changing.
Yeah, which is, well.
So just based on the
If you're a stretch code community, then they're, then we're required to
My understanding is that Shrewsbury hasn't, um,
Shrewsbury has adopted the first one, not the second.
But not the second one, correct. That was my understanding.
So you guys are under, under the purview of the first stretch code upgrade for this, for constructing the
Well, we will be under whichever code when we file for that permit. So ideally, um, you know, not even ideally, so it will be determined when we file the, the, for the building permit.
Got it.
As of today, it would be the stre, the stretch code. I have heard that there is a potential move within Shrewsbury to move to the next one, but it has not yet been voted on, but my understanding is that it's, there's discussion on it.
Got it. All right. But obviously, Pulte, you guys are suited to handle that.
We're, we are aware of it, and it is an ever-changing world, but it, this Shrewsbury would not be the first community that we would be, um, working under that code.
Yeah. You'd be, you'd have to do the blower door test for each unit separately here for the herd, get the hers rating on each one, or would the hers rating be the whole building, you know?
So it varies because it's a, it, it changes based on the heating. So being that this is, um, uh, fully electrified, it changes what those ratings are as opposed to being heated by, uh, you know, a, natural gas or oil. So, uh, I couldn't say to you exactly what that hers rating is, would be required, uh, under the stretch code today, but I know that it varies based on, uh, the fact that this is a fully electrified building as opposed to, um, fueled by fossil fuels.
Is that report that would have to be submitted with the permit application to basically the design of the building to meet the hers rating requirements? Is that a report that Pulte would do, or is that somebody you would hire to do that report for you?
Oh, we, we have internal staff that would, um, file that.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I, could I ask you to just go over the exterior components of it? I, I missed a little bit. So is it stone on the bottom, or?
Um, yeah, that's a, there's a, it's a mix of a stone facade. So here's a, a, you know, an actual example of two, these are, um, two existing buildings. One of them is in Woburn, the other one is in Westwood. Uh, and so, um, you know, there's, there is a stone component for, uh, a certain distance from the existing grade up, and then it varies kind of with the changes in the, the facade of the building as far as, um, the, the height of how far that stone facade carries.
And then beyond the stone, is that hardy plank? Is it vinyl? What?
Uh, that's vinyl, and then the box bays are, are, are built out, um,
It's composite. There, it's an S, it's, um, AZAC, but that's a name brand, so it could be some type of composite. So it's a variety of different treatments.
Okay. Questions, comments, before we open it up?
I don't have anything until public comment.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Please step forward. If you could state your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Yeah, my name is Havinder Singh, and, uh, 169 Green Street is my address. Um, so just looking at the building, it is towering and kind of imposing on all the neighboring single-family homes. I was just wondering, um, if any part is gonna be leveled, um, the height is gonna be reduced, or you're gonna maintain the topography as you men, as you mentioned, right? Uh, that is one of the things. Uh, the other piece is, how are you going to address, um, uh, the noise pollution, the light pollution coming from there, and the privacy, um, just the neighboring? So in the map Just the neighboring, so in the map that you just showed, I'm at the kind of the lower elevation on the southeast side of, of the map. And that building, just looking at the picture, is, it's kind of almost imposing on, on, on that part of the neighborhood. So I wanted to kind of see how you're going to address the noise pollution, the light pollution, because the cars coming in and out of the garage, it's going to directly come at the bedroom level of my home. Just looking at kind of the elevation plan you had. And the third thing was the privacy. How, how are you going to address the privacy? Are you going to plant tall trees around the periphery of the, the, the area? So those were my questions, how those are going to be addressed.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your address.
Oh, it's one sixty-nine Green Street.
So just to touch upon, we'll start with the noise pollution. We don't anticipate any significant noise post-construction outside of any, a normal residential community that would require any additional architectural treatments. From the, the light perspective, we certainly can look at the potential for car headlights and the potential for them to, to shine on any. I, I don't, can't think about the top of my head where one sixty-nine is, but I believe we are a pretty significant distance from most homes on Green. And there is a pretty significant existing vegetative buffer that will remain, that we're not, that, between the, the development and the homes on Green Street. But we're certainly something that we can look at as far as looking at, and cars entering the, the garage unders and where the, the headlights could shine as far as relative to neighboring homes. From a light pollution perspective or, or concern, all of our streetlights will be shielded, you know, appropriately. And we have a photometric plan that was submitted as part, that's part of the package that was, that is online that shows, you know, the, the distance of that light that's carried relative to those, those streetlights. Did I, is there another one that I missed?
The last one is the privacy. I mean, those are like real tall buildings there, right? Four-story buildings, so, I mean, tall trees could be one of the ways to kind of have some privacy around those. Do you have any plans for that?
So we will be putting in landscaping around the buildings. We are proposing along our, the, the emergency access on Green Street. Down here, a, a fence, the, the neighbor that lives in that home, that's right along that emergency access, attended one of the earlier meetings and I, I apologize, I don't recall her name. She spoke up and asked about that, and that is something that we're accommodating. In that location is, is a privacy fence in that area. Again, there is a significant amount of existing vegetation that we will not be touching, that is full-growth forest between our buildings and the homes on Green Street.
So you don't plan to have any additional trees around the?
We will definitely be planting trees periodically throughout the, the, the development. And again, as part of our, of design package, there's a landscaping plan that, that was submitted as part of that and that identifies, calls out specifically each of the, the plantings that would be put in place as part of this.
Ask a question. Are you, are you one of those two homes that where that says stop sharing on the screen?
Sorry, I don't know if I can, oh.
Oh.
Hide that, there you go.
Are, are you one of those two homes there?
So it's on the corner of Appaloosa and Green Street.
Oh, so you're, you're off the page. Oh, okay.
And just from a, you know, without knowing the exact elevation difference from where your home is and where those are, you know, that, as you know, that Green Street does continue up pretty, you know, at a good clip from there. I would think that you're still pretty well above from an elevation perspective where these, these buildings will be when you carry that distance up Green Street.
So right now I see that area is already at a higher elevation, so the buildings will be on top of the higher elevation.
Okay, so you're, it's a, it's a bit of a valley in between?
Yeah. So that, that was my concern.
Hmm.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi, Abdullah DeJelly, ninety-two Green Street.
I'm sorry, what was the address?
Ninety-two Green Street, nine Z.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so not a specific question on the architecture, but just a question on, I understand that there will be another round of public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, through, there, there had been some comments from all the neighbor, the residents for the past hearing. So I, I mean, I didn't see, there is some address of some of these comments that have been made before regarding the, the traffic, regarding the status of Green Street. So is, is there, the next session, is it going to be like a compilation of, of how these comments were addressed? Or what's the plan to address them?
Good question. Louise, do you want to address that?
I'm sure. So I know the board has taken into consideration everyone's comments and questions. And so through their deliberation and work with town staff, they'll work to see if there are any other, you know, asks of the applicant. And I, you know, we can try and make maybe a more comprehensive list of things that we've heard and see what has been addressed, just to have that. But, and, and through their deliberation, I think the, the board will answer some of those questions as well in the public setting.
So is it going to be the next public hearing, the one that's going to be in, in May?
May twenty-third is the next public hearing.
Okay. So, so basically that will be the, the discussion of all the comments and whether they have been addressed or what has been done? Like, so for example, if I see at the site map, I mean, some of the, some suggestions were made to, about the egresses, the, the connector road, but I see that, I mean, it's, it's the same status, hasn't been changed. And the, the Green Street status, you know, about the slab of ice, about the traffic impact and volume. So we haven't heard anything about what, what we plan to do about it.
Right.
So my understanding now is that May, the session in May will address these.
I, and I do encourage everyone to go on our website and I have all of the comments, comment letters there. And you can look at what our peer reviewer has said as well in their, you know, you know, their expertise and their comments towards their traffic review. I know that's super helpful for myself to review because I'm not a traffic engineer. So looking at their comments and that back and forth may help to see if any of those questions have been answered through the peer review as well.
Okay, uh, thank you. So then just a question if it's, I mean, if the residents are, you know, not, maybe, it's not, not to say satisfied, but you know, something is like not convincing in the way that these comments are addressed. Well, what is the resolution of this conflict? How, how would that will get addressed? Is it?
Wish our forty B expert was here to. So because it's a forty B process, there are certain things that we are allowed to comment on and there's, there's a jurisdiction that falls within our purview. And then some things that are beyond that. We're listening, the, the town is, is doing the best that they can do to, to make a compilation of all the concerns. And there's a lot of conversations that occur between meetings, back and forth between the developer, the peer review, staff at the town level. So I can imagine that you're speaking at these hearings and not hearing comments back. I would suspect that a lot of the things that you're concerned about might be points of reference at our next meeting. Whether they're addressed fully to your desire or not remains to be seen.
Right. And, and like traffic concerns, I know that's a big one as well. But the board also, much like any board, needs to look at the site itself. You know, Route twenty, you know, Green Street itself are all existing conditions. There might be mitigation aspects that the traffic report has, you know, commented on or, you know, something's been changed. But we can't hold the applicant, you know, to all of Route twenty's problems, things like that. So, okay.
So, sorry, just would recommend, because I know that some of the comments you made in particular were related to the traffic meeting. And there has been some significant back and forth, you know, our, between our traffic engineer who came and presented, as well as the town hired a peer review traffic engineer to, to conduct a similar study. And there was a kind of comment and response, kind of back and forth between the two engineers and experts. And that, I believe, is posted or if it's not posted, it will be. And there may be some similar kind of FAQs in there or, or issues that may have been brought up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of, like, I haven't been checking the page, but so, yeah, just wanted to, to point out that, you know, what's, what's our way of, you know, following up with the comments that we have made so far?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a good question. Thank you for asking it. Any other comments? Sir?
I just want to add one more thing. So one more thing is, again, one sixty-nine Green Street, Havinder Singh. I, you and my wife both work from home. During the construction phase, how do you manage the, the whole noise? As well as you might be digging the foundations and so on. And for a four-story building, that's, that's going to be significant. How is that generally managed for the closed neighborhoods?
So we will be, you know, this is one step in the process. Once, assuming that a comprehensive permit is issued, part of the next process would be really two primary components related to construction. One would be a temporary traffic mitigation plan, just to understand what, for exactly that from a traffic perspective for construction vehicles as well as personal vehicles. But additionally, we can work with the town and the plane department, eventually the building department to, and I'm, I'm assuming as part of our permit, there'll be conditions as far as work hours and times. But it's also something that we can work with the town to identify schedules of when certain elements will be under construction at, at which periods in our, the overall schedule.
Okay. But many of the neighbors around, they work from home, so I, I, I see a problem there. Because typically you would, might, we might want to use the daytime for the construction, but even that's the time I, I, I'm at home. So that's, that's going to be a challenge and probably I urge you to kind of keep that in consideration as well.
Right.
All, if it helps, all of our building will be permitted through the building department. So when the building department issues those building permits, it comes with conditions and, and rules and regulations of the town of Shrewsbury that we'll have to comply with, the same way every other builder and developer of all the construction in Shrewsbury have to comply with. And then there's inspectors and the staff that, that manage the construction on behalf of the town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I think we've satisfied the public comment. All right. Next steps?
Continuation in the next meeting?
Anything else, any other information that we need?
No, not that I can, I think of, I mean, I look forward to our next meeting, May twenty-third and, and, you know, coordinating between now and then to make sure that we are, we have all of the information and you have all the information that you're looking for. Again, I think that, Louise, you and I exchanged emails today. I think that we're kind of current as far as the information necessary for that. So we look forward to coming back on May twenty-third and meeting with you again.
I, I have one question. I know that a lot of the concerns that we're hearing from the abutters on Appaloosa, amongst other things that we're hearing are the height of the building and how it's going to impact their views. And, you know, given how, how much visual impact this may or may not have on them, is there anything that Pulte has, any tricks of the trade of being able to show what the views are from that neighborhood?
So I think a part of the challenge from that neighborhood is it's, it's a significant distance actually away from it's, it's, where the closest buildings are over four hundred feet from each other. And between that, there's over two hundred and fifty feet, I know that just because we've looked at this, of existing forest that will be untouched by our project. You know, it'll be, again, two hundred and fifty feet of untouched forest between the two. That being said, there is, you know, there's no doubt there's some topography going through there and that somebody that lives on Appaloosa, when you, a home was built on, you know, the section of Appaloon where we're building, whether it would be building a, you know, a, a three-story home similar to theirs on Appaloosa or, or what we're building, it would be very visible just by, based on that, that topography. So it, I don't, it's, again, it's kind of set back off in the distance. So I don't know the, what we would be, because it's not as, we do sightline analyses where, where, you know, people do balloon tests to kind of identify where, you know, height would be similar to the tree line. This situation is, again, is a little bit different because of, you know, Appaloosa's up here, there's a valley that kind of comes down in between. And then, you know, the knoll that we're building on is up over here. And so it's, it's, it's almost a, you know, they're almost at similar elevations. So it would be looking at a building off in the distance is kind of what they're seeing. Whereas, you know, any homeowner that looks out and sees trees and the trees will come down and it will now be a home or another building that's similar to what this is going to be. Whereas it doesn't feel to me like it's an imposing, you know, structure. But yes, it's visible off in the distance, whereas it was trees at one, at one time. I'm not sure how we would, or what kind of analysis we could provide to help with that.
I know in the past, the balloon test has been helpful, and I'm talking years ago when we had cell tower hearings that came in front of us. And I'm not suggesting or asking that, I just thought maybe there was some, I don't know, program that you could show sightlines. Uh, just, I feel obliged to ask for that. And we can, we can pick this up at the next meeting. I just wanted to plant the seed that, that's one of the many things that are going through my mind. And again, we can't change it and we're not asking you to change it. I just think knowing and having that information would be impactful to the, to the neighborhood. So I don't, I don't know.
No, and, and I absolutely understand, you know, what you're at, like what you're saying. And I've, I've been experienced similar or conditions where that, it helped to demonstrate a, a view corridor or a perspective that, you know, kind of, you know, from a pedestrian perspective, kind of what the feel would be or. This situation is just a little bit different again because it's more of a, a view shed where it's, again, it's, you know, up, up to four to five hundred feet off in the, in the distance. And because of the topography, it will be visible from those homes, but it's not necessarily a perspective view. And I don't know how, you know, it's.
It's far away. So you're saying that the impact is really mitigated just by virtue of being four hundred?
So I, I want to be clear and say that I'm not minimizing what anybody's opinion is or perspective. I think it just would be hard for us to try and demonstrate, you know, again, I can understand when someone asks, like from a pedestrian perspective at a streetscape, what a, you know, the pedestrian feel would be as far as you're looking down a view corridor when you have a, you know, a facade. But, you know, this is almost like a painting where it's off in the distance. And, you know, I like to look at, you know, trees and, and a nice lake or a pond and this is going to be a building and it's off in the distance. So it's, again, it's almost more of a, a, it's, it's hard to really demonstrate what, what it's going to look like as far as there will be a building off in the distance that people will see, you know? And so I don't know if.
With ChatGPT and all these crazy things, is not some magic trick that?
Again, I, I think that we could probably come up with something that shows a building off in the distance from Appaloosa. I just, I don't, you know, I'm not sure exactly what, you know, it's.
It would show you looking through trees.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of an example, like I, I live in Grafton and, and I drive down by Tufts on Route thirty and I, I see the development on Route twenty over the tracks off in the distance, that hill. That was always a beautiful, you know, in the fall, the trees, the colors. And I kind of think of it similar to that in that it's just a, it's a views corridor that's off in the distance that it will now appear differently to me from, you know, and again, I understand, appreciate that this is their home and so that they're maybe looking at their kitchen or wherever, or their deck. It's just, it's still, it's off in the distance and it's a view corridor. So it, you know, we could probably, and I, respectfully, we could Photoshop in a, you know, a building into a picture taken from their house. a building into a picture taken from their house. Um outside of that, again, I'm not sure how we could kind of engineer a, uh and I know my engineer is squirming in the background behind me as I'm talking about this.
The rule is eyes.
It would really be more of an artist representation of kind of what the building could look like. Was that, is that better? Um but it it would be hard to really demonstrate, um you know, from a, an engineer or architectural perspective that what that um view corridor would would appear like.
Um yes, because the public hearing is still open, so if you want to step up here.
I mean, I'm just asking about, I'm just asking the possibility of, you know, using Google Earth or something, you know, that you have the topography of the uh the site. And it's possible, like, you know, there is this uh street view. I I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud and if if you assume that this is the 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 height of the building at this particular site and it's possible to render how it would look like from Appaloosa?
I mean, it's certainly possible to put together a computer-generated kind of off in the distance kind of view corridor. Um I I just, but that view corridor is going to be different from each and every uh home and neighbors, you know, where they're looking for. And so the the challenge that I'm having is that, like, how do we demonstrate kind of one view corridor in particular? That um, you know, because again, everybody's view corridor looking at that direction is going to be different. Um so I'm I'm, it's it's not that it's impossible. I'm not sure that I understand what the 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 specific task would be to 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 uh, you know, provide something.
Well, so I think, again, playing devil's advocate and trying to recall all of the many, many comments that we had. And again, I do think that next month, we'll get a little bit further into this, but I did want to plant the seed. I mean, I just think seeing something, and again, I'm going to go back to the balloon test, and maybe that's just a pedestrian way of looking at it. But being able to see how high up the building's going to be from whatever part of Appaloosa I live at might be helpful.
I I un- I understand how it would be helpful um for people to see, um you know, from different perspectives. And if there were a certain ask uh associated with that, that would potentially solve um a broader um ask of the general public than trying to pick one specific computer-generated image of what something would look like. Um, you know, uh and so that, again, I I, doing a a balloon test I threw out there as something that, you know, kind of in the 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 realm of addressing concerns related to um kind of perspective and, you know, and, you know, pedestrian realm or or how it might, uh, you know, feel from a, you know, for certain levels um would seem more um doable than, again, trying to put together a a rendering from one specific um view view corridor.
Uh can you just, and again, I'm trying not to get into nooks and crannies, and I am, and I apologize. But when you say a balloon test, is it just a simple, you know, I'm sure it's more complicated and the engineer back here is probably like, please don't ask for that. Um but is it literally something that goes up in the sky and you can see the top height of the building? Is that the way it works?
That is, it's, yeah, it really is um uh as simple as that, you know.
I mean, that might satisfy just, just a visual. So we can, we can table that for now, but I wanted to go, given that we were talking about architecture, um I just wanted to let you know that was on my mind.
And and I appreciate that and um just in the, you know, in the with the goal of trying to find the, you know, the 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 end game for this process, um you know, I guess what I would ask is, um, you know, just kind of what, what would that solve? And if that is an ask, could we get that ask sooner rather than later? Only because, um, you know, the the meeting every other, or once a month, excuse me. Um it, um, you know, it 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 could eventually keep, drag this uh
That's fair.
schedule out.
Sure. And again, I I might be shooting from the hip and this might be well beyond something that we're even allowed to by forty B standards ask for. Um I, but I'm hearing a continual concern with the neighbors about the impact it's going to have on them. And we all understand um that we live in a area that there is a lot of growth and building. And um and and frankly, if we could have invited a a a company that would do a great job to our town to represent three hundred units in that area, you would be the company. You do this, this is what you do, you do it well. Um but I am continually reminded of the impact it does have on a neighborhood that, by the way, is named Farm View. Um so a- and we can't change that, but I just, if I lived there, I'd want to just know. I, that would be just my ask is, put a balloon up there and show me what it's going to look like off in the distance. I can't change it, we're not asking you to change it. Uh respectfully, I think you've done a wonderful job. The architectural elements of this are very, very nice. I just, for me personally, representing the community, I I just feel like seeing something. I I don't know, a tree that's painted red, um that just shows where it starts and ends would be helpful to me. So I I guess I would ask, you know, I don't want to see this continue to drag out. I certainly know time is money. Um maybe you can address my concerns and come up with something quickly? I don't know that anything's going to move quickly in this. And I, again, I'm I'm trying not to put the kibosh on anything at all. But I am remain concerned about the impact it has on the neighbors.
And 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 I appreciate that and and I assure you that we have also heard that and not that, you know, it was, it would come as a surprise. And, you know, we've tried to be out front with with, you know, the the neighbors and and, you know, uh hosting informational sessions and and whatnot and um being very, um, you know, transparent. So, oh, I I can certainly uh offer to look into a a balloon test and um something. But uh again, my concern is, that to me makes more sense, I guess, than trying to come up with a rendering that may satisfy one.
One neighbor but not another.
Neighbor say, well, it doesn't look like anything from my house, so I don't care what that looks like. So, um, you know, and as opposed to trying to chase our tail around continuously, uh I can work with Louise and Chris um to identify um something that you're comfortable with that could satisfy. And again, I understand what you're, um, you know, where you're coming from with this as far as, uh, you know, the kind of trying to visualize what this is going to be and and uh a potential impact to a view corridor. Uh so I can work with Louise and Chris to come up with um something that we can do to demonstrate that, you know, where, you know, this um again, whether it's, we'll just use balloon test because right now that's.
Right, as a placeholder, right.
Uh that this balloon test in this location um on this date is going to be an opportunity to see kind of what um this a a building or in this location would look like.
So I just have a question. So on this balloon test, will will the residents get notified so that they can view it?
Hundred percent. That would be the whole goal. We would want to send up, we would want to make sure that we want to make sure that everybody um in the area was aware of it because they'll, really, the goal of it would be to get everybody the opportunity to uh to witness it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. One last comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to the, maybe this is just a suggestion. Uh you might have some software. Today we can do, we can view the furniture using augmented reality. We can view the furniture, how it's going to look at my in my living room. You may have some software like that where any of the residences will, can use that and see how the building is going to appear.
I don't doubt that that software exists. Uh it amazes me daily what what new software and new things come out. Um we don't have that software at our disposal, um nor nor do I know the of something that we could um implement in a, you know, a relatively, um, you know, reasonable amount of time to do that in the future. I can see that being something that could be very helpful, you know, for um that use. But I don't know that we have that. I I haven't seen that at all.
Okay. We as residents would also try to look if we can find something like that, open source, but we would, we might.
We might just have invented something now that I, it's always business opportunities, right?
Yeah, and we'll just probably need some additional inputs like the the picture and the elevation and all that stuff. Um but if something, we we come across something like that, we'll send it your way.
Great.
We might want to utilize that. But to your point, absolutely, it'll give us a feeling of comfort, um just to see how it's going to look. Um like like we have perception and that may be amplified. So it may be unjustifiably amplified, so we would want to kind of alleviate that concern if it is.
That's absolutely fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Just want to say gentlemen.
Your expectation on the schedule here, in terms of a vote from the board, permit, you know, your permit application?
Well, based, based on the schedule that we had talked about, you know, when we had our first meeting uh and when we submitted in November, um ideally in the next, you know, couple meetings would be. And whether that's, um, you know, if there's an opportunity for a special meeting, I know that there's town meeting coming up in May and everybody's schedule is jammed. Um but, you know, we have the meeting scheduled for the twenty-third. If there's an opportunity for um, you know, another special meeting in between, that would um certainly help.
We could definitely talk about that internally. I I don't have a problem with that. I know this has been a long process. I think all of us are looking forward to just sort of bringing it to a close. So um we can talk about that internally and um definitely consider um a special meeting.
Great.
Okay, we'll take that under advisement. Anything else, any other businesses that we need to attend to? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Can I just ask just one point of clarification from this region? Um I know we have a couple of members absent this evening, just to confirm that Mullins is in place and that they will be able to review.
Thank you, they will. Yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Need a motion to continue?
Um yes, can I get a motion to continue, please?
May twenty-third.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To a specific date?
Yes, which I have. Uh motion to continue the comprehensive permit uh for thirty-three through thirty-nine Green Street, forty B. Um for the permit uh for construction of a three hundred unit, unit multifamily residential development to May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to close meeting?
Motion to close today's meeting?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All moved.